Welcome, everybody, tonight. We're glad that you joined us. As you can see, we have the Port of Houston Authority and we also have TechStop with us, our regional partners. And we're going to be talking about some of the upcoming projects, infrastructure in the area and some key other issues in the area as well. We're going to have sort of a panel format tonight, so they're going to be talking about the projects. And then we'll pause, once they go through the projects, to pause and see if there's any questions from the audience. At the end, we'll kind of wrap up and do a general question and answer session at that time. We have two microphones and we'll have a staff person going around, so if you'll raise your hand if you've got a question, we'll give you a mic so that everybody can hear the question and then answer as well. Right now, we'll target trying to not extend this through your entire evening, but if you have further questions, we can certainly do it, but we'll be looking to probably end no later than 7:30. So we'll go ahead and get started. I'll do introductions. We've got our council with us tonight, so we have Jackie Rasko, Joe McCall, our mayor, Tom Kulebski, and Mayor Pro Tem Buddy Hammond. And then I'm going to start on this end with our TechStop representatives. If you will just speak into the mic and introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Evar Karkasas with TechStop Southeast Transportation Engineer.
And I'm David Ballard, TechStop Southeast Harris Area Office.
Jamal Elahi, I'm Southeast Harris Area Engineer, TechStop.
Good evening, Ryan Mary Acker, Port Houston, lead our operations division.
Hi, Maria Aguirre, and I'm the Director of Community Relations for Port Houston.
Hi, I'm Jordan Frisbee with Port Houston, Director of Technical and Business Analytics.
Thank you very much. So on our topics tonight, we'll be touching on mostly the north side infrastructure. There's quite a bit that's going to be going on on our north side, so we've gotten this meeting to kind of dive into it, to see what is going to be expected in that area, what disruptions that are going to be potential over the next couple of years. And then these experts can tell you based on the project if you have any specific questions. So we'll be touching on the 146 Expansion Project at Red Bluff Intersection, so the overpass that has got quite a bit of stalled construction right now. We'll talk about Old 146 that leads into the intersection and what's going to be happening there. And then flip over to the Port of Houston. So they had earlier this past year mentioned and announced what's called Southern Access Road, that'll also be in that northern district, in addition to the rail spur that will be completed and be going live, when they'll give us an update later next year or this year. And then end on the boat ramp under 146 and go into general Q and A. So we'll go ahead and start. I'll pass over to our TechStop representatives to talk about the first project, which is the expansion project starting at Red Bluff.
Want to switch to the next slide, please?
Speak into the mic, please.
Sure, sir. So our project 0398-05087, the project location, as you all know, is the limits are from Red Bluff to Spencer Highway, 5.8 miles, which includes the intersection at Seabrook, Red Bluff, and Old State Highway 146. Currently, the project is started in 20, first quarter of 2022, and we project the project would be completing or ending by third quarter of 2028. Widening of the overpasses, we have the widening, sorry about that, so widening of the overpasses is going to be over the Red Bluff, Shoreacre Boulevard, and Warden Wing Boulevard, the full structural replacements that we are planning to do with this project is Fairmount Parkway, Little Cedar Bayou, and Taylor Bayou. It's the existing facility is 12-foot lanes, wide lanes with 10-foot shoulders and intermediate sidewalks and frontage road. We are constructing the frontage roads, two frontage roads each direction, and also shared pedestrian and bike path. So next slide. You want to go?
One more.
That one? Yeah. Evar, you want to go explain that slide, please?
Sure. Can you hear me well? Okay, fantastic. So the work you're probably most interested about is what you see here in the picture on the screens, and let's keep it simple, from left to right, we got a few things going on. So that dash line you see in pink, that's the northbound, the sidewalk is going to be along the northbound feeder road, and that construction is ongoing, it's in progress. Now, again, stay on the left-hand side of the screen and move all the way down. That's a proposed southbound feeder road, which at this time is currently a two-way feeder road, so essentially in front of Geon. And we're not going to close that quite yet, it'll stay in that configuration for about another two years, but the end goal is for that to be an independent southbound feeder road. Keep looking at, thank you, at the southbound feeder road and work your way towards the right. You'll see that we have a proposed southbound on-ramp there, and that would be essentially a replacement of the existing southbound exit ramp, but we're not losing that southbound exit ramp to Red Bluff. It's only going to move.
She's still struggling to hear you. When you go to look at your notes, you look down and then you're out of the mic.
Oh, I got you.
I made sure you weren't starting with Red Bluff.
How's that? Oh, I can hear now. Fantastic. Let me hit that again from the top. So right where you got your cursor, you see a new ramp there that is going to be a proposed southbound on-ramp coming from Port Road. At this time, it's an existing exit ramp. You're not losing that ramp, that ramp is just going to move north, essentially north of Geon. And that's going to be towards the final leg of this project. And again, it's essentially to keep access to that southbound feeder road as it is now, as we keep working and keep Geon and the people that need to go up and down that road, keep them serviced until the very last part of the project. Now, look on the upper side of the screen, thank you, you're going to see another ramp there. That's the northbound on-ramp from Red Bluff Road, and that one's going to remain open until we finish that northbound feeder road. As you may have seen, there's work ongoing currently on that northbound feeder road. I'd say we're about 75% complete. And again, once we finish that is when we'll basically take out the ramp as you see it and do it slightly newer at a slightly shifted location, but basically on the footprint you see on the screen. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see some areas shaded in red, and that is the overpass at Red Bluff. On that portion of the project, we widened the bridge in both directions, north and south, and that is happening simultaneously to both sides of the bridge. And the expected completion for that bridge is actually this summer. If it all goes well, we're looking about June, July. And that is all we got on that specific area of the project. And if you go a couple more slides forward. Okay, so that kind of trails from what I was mentioning. So the overpass construction restarted this last fall, fall of 2024, and like I mentioned, we should see it complete towards the summer of 2025, so about June, July, that's when the overpass should be completed. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to open the roadway to its full capacity because we still need to work on the areas to the north, but the structure itself will be completed in a few months. To speak on that intersection, the one adjacent to it, Old Highway 146, I'm going to pass it on to my area engineer, but that's a news on the overpass at Red Bluff.
Evar and Jamal, won't we pause here for just a minute? So on the Red Bluff overpass area, before we jump to the intersection project, we'll see if there's any questions from the audience. If y'all just raise your hand if you have a question, and we'll give you the mic.
So is there going to be a, the flyover? Where's the flyover here? Because this is what a lot of people are wanting to know, about the flyover that's supposed to be right here.
So that's going to be a completely different project. That's a proposed project, and it'll be potentially a future TechStop project, but that's completely separate, not funded, it'll be many years down the road.
This is part of why we're having a town hall tonight to ask those questions about this. That's part of why we brought it up.
Definitely.
But now there's no, there's not even, I mean, no one knows any plans for it? Like where it would be or how tall it would be, anything like that?
At this, at this time, it's just a proposal. I believe it's on the HGAC, one of the, like, it's just a proposal at this time, none of those details have been determined yet.
Okay, then my next question. See where your green little thing at the top is? That's going to be a warehouse right there. That warehouse guy wants to have a access road toward where your arrow is at the purple, where there's a sidewalk. Will there be an access exit from there so the trucks don't have to go onto Old 146 and then get up onto 146?
That's the PUD document that y'all approved, that was on the developer's side, so they did grant, I think that's probably a different division, they've got a driveway permit that they'll have to go through.
You guys don't know anything about that?
I think, I think they actually worked out the owners of the hotel.
Hotel, right.
So there's no, there's no additional needed, I think that was the thing.
All right, so any other, so Evar, on the timeline though, so we'll start to see construction crews come back on the overpass at Red Bluff here in the next few weeks then?
Construction at the overpass has been ongoing, and it will continue for the next two, three months, like I mentioned, so yeah, it's ongoing, we didn't stop, it's going to keep going.
We just haven't seen crews, so we've been reporting that they'll be getting back in the area, I think in the next few weeks. Okay, so if you're going to wrap up by the end of summer, we'll start to see activity again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there was always talk about having a sound barrier, whatever happened to that? The sound barrier for the flow of traffic. I mean, we were, I think we were promised that many years ago, and just as a, just hearing it, I'm kind of curious what happened to that.
There's $1.6 million. Is that separate? Oh.
Are you talking about the entirety of 146, the sound wall?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, so do y'all want to speak? I mean, we've asked questions, so there was an early environmental, do you want to speak on that, Jamal?
The early environmental, we saw that there was, there is some sound wall someplace, but not the entirety of 146. And I think there was some discussion about that, but I think the sound study did not warrant it, because that's what was told to us. And there are, like, there's a portion of it that has already has sound walls on the plan, I think. I need to confirm those locations, but you know.
Yeah, I think on re-reviewing your site plans, I think there's some that are further down where there's in the project, but not within our city limits. So I think the gentleman's referring to the current 146 Expansion Project as well, so the entire corridor down to NASA, there was no sound walls in the project that's wrapping up?
No, I don't think so. If the sound study and the environmental didn't get approved, then they're not part of this.
Well, how couldn't it, how couldn't it get approved? Because the sound study was done in 2013, you didn't start the project till 2019.
Yes, sir.
So I have a huge problem with that. You decided, you decided to this whole group that you had a sound study before the road was ever done. The speed limit was only 35 miles an hour, and you had to stop all the time. Of course, that's not going to be an issue. Now you have overpasses and you have the road, the people going 65 miles an hour. So I have a big problem with it.
Yes, sir.
The citizen asked a question, is there a current study? And obviously, no, the answer's no. So just say that, and then say, "Sound walls do work because you guys put them up, they're on 288, they're all over Houston, so they do work, so how could it be environmentally not good? Is it environmentally not good everywhere else?"
I'm not saying it's not environmentally good, I'd said it's environmentally not warranted. And that's what I...
I challenge that. When was the study done? Was that done after the road was finished?
No, it cannot be done after the road is finished, it's done before the road is constructed.
Well, that's the stupidest thing I've ever heard, and I've heard a lot of stupid things. Right now, as you correctly pointed out, before the highway construction was done, 35 miles an hour, lots of stoplights, not a lot of traffic. Now, it's a racetrack, okay? And we aren't even close to the road, and we, you walk out of the house and that's the first thing you hear is vehicles going by. So whoever's doing your assessment that's not required, I'd like to have a little discussion with them because that's nonsensical.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think if you talk to most of the people in the community, they would concur that we need to do another study and we need to assess whether we need to do a sound wall or not.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ivy Buskey, and I'm with Lake Cove HOA, and yes, we do need another sound study. Because it's, there's 507 homes, I mean, it is bad. I welcome you to come out and check it out yourself, because it is required something that has to be done now, not before, when there was no traffic, you know, like we have now.
Sure, ma'am, we can definitely pass that message to the upper management and let them know that that is required and warranted from you guys.
Okay, so what would be your timeline to get back with us?
We can get with Ms. Gail and...
So I have a question regarding that, actually, for Gail, because I was sitting in these council chambers about two months ago when a gentleman from Lake Cove spoke on behalf of the neighborhood, and it was discussed that day during council, and Gail, if I'm not mistaken, you said that you were going to reach out to TechStop and work on getting that study. I'm a little confused because what I'm hearing here is that they're unaware of that even being activated or discussed again. So Gail, what is the situation with that? Because we heard one thing, but we're hearing something else now.
So that would be inaccurate. Jamal and I and David have exchanged emails. The report that he's referring to, when you go to the project page on TechStop, the environmentals that are done across all the TechStop projects are done before the project starts, so that's what we're referring to right now. What he's referring to is if any other studies are done, he has to progress that up, so we've had those discussions. It's not anything that his office can do.
So am I hearing then, did I misunderstand you? Did you say that that wasn't happening now, but that it was something that y'all could look at? Because from my perspective, it sounds like this is something that hasn't been discussed, and now you're willing to take it into consideration.
Well, I have to, as, like, all our projects are done, like Ms. Gail was saying, that all our projects, environmental has been, has to be approved before the project can get into a construction phase. And that's where, when they do the sound studies, based on projection, I'm not an environmental expert, I'm just a construction guy, so I don't know how they project those traffic volumes and how they do it, but obviously, that's all done before the project is funded and gets into construction phase.
So my question is, has that been discussed recently? Because that's what I'm having a hard time understanding, because the gentleman that came up here and spoke and was told that it would be discussed again and considered, you know, he spoke very eloquently and he was told that this would happen, it doesn't sound like that discussion has been activated again.
I think we, David, you reached out to environmental section and did discuss that with them.
Yeah, I went and talked to environmental, because there was a citizen, I don't remember his name, but he reached out to TechStop and said, hey, you know, I've got an issue with my house, I've got a lot of sound.
Sure.
But, and then so, we started answering back and forth with emails, and then I turned it over to Terry, which is the environmentalist. And, you know, when we do our projects, like, we have one on the south, we have this one in the middle, we have one on the north, we've already done our sound studies on those, and it won't merit to do another one, we have to have another project to stick it on, or they're not going to do it.
Okay, so what I understand then is that the gentleman that spoke that day was given a false promise by the city.
Well, I don't know if it was a false promise or not, maybe they just didn't have the right information.
So did you speak with the city? You spoke with a private citizen, so the private citizen reached out to you. Did Gail Cook reach out to y'all?
Well, the private citizen...
Or anybody on behalf of the city?
I don't, I don't really know how the private citizen got my email address.
Which is fine, I've been in this situation, I've dealt with Geon and worked with them hand in hand. So I think it's great, but I think that we're paying the city a lot of money to represent us. So if it's a private citizen having to go through this, I have a huge problem with that, when our city manager makes $207,000 a year.
Well, it's not, it's not nothing against anybody, we're not trying to do anything malicious or anything, it's just, the guy was trying to find some information, he happened to get my information, and he reached out to me.
Just so you understand, my problem isn't necessarily with you guys, my problem is with the poor communication from the city, and what seemingly is bad information.
So just to be clear, we've, I've communicated with TechStop, so what David Ballard is saying is, the answer back from TechStop right now is they've done the study, it's not warranted. So at this point, anything that we do above and beyond this, will have to go up to the main director of TechStop. They are not warranted to do a sound wall.
Is Terry, why didn't Terry come if we're going to have sound questions?
We didn't know you were going to have those questions.
So you just said you contacted. Did you, or did you not?
I've contacted TechStop, yes.
About the sound study that the guy asked two months ago?
Yes.
You did.
The study that they're referencing is the study that was done for this project.
No, that's not what it is. They want a new study, they've had a study that was done in 2013, everyone knows that, it was done in 2013. Is there a...
TechStop said they're not doing another study.
Okay, then there's the answer, they're just not going to do it. But the citizens are saying they need to redo it. That's the part you're missing. You don't listen very well. What they want is a new study because the road is now 65 miles an hour, and there's two overpasses. So all that sound carries into Lake Cove and other places. I can hear it from my house, super loud. The point is, we want a new study. Now, the question will be, who do we need to contact at TechStop to get a new study? Because it's too loud in the neighborhoods, especially at Lake Cove and all, because I'm going to bypass our city, we're going to go straight to you because we're not getting satisfaction. That's where we're at.
Well, we, it would be with our Traffic and Planning Director, Mr. Grady Mapson, Gail has a lot of good contacts with him, and she can, well, definitely, if you have sent it to us, there's no need to be like that, we, I hear you.
And if you have great contacts, and then if you have great contacts...
And she can reach out, we don't...
You have great contacts and no one actually talks to them, what good does that do?
Sir, we'd like to go through the city. If it comes from us, whatever you send us the request, we will go through the city. We do like to coordinate with the cities, we don't directly like to interact directly with public, we just directly go through.
Hey, we're not getting satisfaction that way, so what do we do?
Well, you just send us that request and we will then respond back to you directly.
Okay, I hope the citizens heard that. If you contact, we'll have to get the information from TechStop on who exactly to contact, so then we'll do it that way, because obviously, we're not getting it done this way.
So one last point, it sounds like, thank you. Hi, it sounds like the voice of the citizens is that we need a new sound study, we need a sound wall there. Okay, I think anybody who spends any time in Lake Cove, okay, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to figure out that there's a lot of noise. And sir, with all due reference, I was an engineer for 42 years, okay, and I'll tell you what, without going back and re-verifying the results of the original sound study and original assessments, you're not doing your jobs. Okay, point blank, okay? Somebody should have gone back after the road went in and re-verified that the results of that sound study were accurate, okay? And if not, then you need to do some mitigation, okay? As far as the city is concerned, okay, what we're saying is asking TechStop to do one, TechStop coming back and saying, "We're not doing one," and we're saying, "We give up." Okay, that's not acceptable, we have to escalate it. I don't care if we go up to Governor Abbott, we have to keep escalating. That's not acceptable. We have to escalate it. I don't care if we go up to Governor Abbott. We have to keep escalating this until we get somebody's attention. That's, I think, what we're all asking for here, right?
Thank you. Do you know what the threshold is to get a sound study? Anyone?
It's supposed to be tied into, like, if you're going to do an interstate or infrastructure project like we're doing now, that's what dictates a sound study. Because, you know, the private citizen that reached out to me said, "Well, you got a landscape project," but that doesn't matter. That doesn't have the infrastructure project that you need, the criteria that you need to be able to put a sound study.
But it's not about sound, so. Okay. I was wondering how long the Red Bluff exit southbound from 146 is going to be closed? The current, so if you're on 146 South and you were going to get off at Red Bluff, it's just closed now. So you have to get off at Port Road?
And sir, you mentioned this is the southbound exit to Red Bluff?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that one. One second.
Well, sir, as I was mentioning a little while ago, that exit does not come back. We're shifting it a little bit further north. So in the final configuration, once it's all said and done, that exit would be just north of Geon. So to answer your question, when does it come back? It would be towards the later stages of the project. Yeah.
I don't think, I think people didn't hear that correctly or very clearly.
Essentially, correct. The southbound exit that you should have now is the one on the north side of the Port Road intersection. So that would be your main exit until the new one is installed towards the end of the project.
Was the city aware of this timeline? Was Gail Cook made aware of this timeline?
I don't have that answer.
I can tell you, no. Because when we put our projects together, the contractor gives the schedules. You know, we don't necessarily share those to all the city entities.
You're literally cutting off the exit for a third to half of the city.
Well, I know it's painful. You know, I'm not going to say here and lie that it's not painful. But if we go back 10 years, okay, but if we go back 10 years before we built the road, what did you have then? You had all the same problems.
It's not nearly the same problem.
It is. It is. I grew up in this area. I can tell you, I love the freeway. I think it's nice. Now you don't have any traffic. You know, so, you know, it is what it is. I mean, progress is, it takes time. It takes effort. It takes, you know, things to do. I can't, it's not a light switch. I can't.
How is that something that you guys shouldn't talk to people about? How is it that you can't prepare a community?
Would it make it, would it make it any better?
Yeah, because then we actually have a chance, yeah, I do know for a fact, I do know for a fact that if 14,000, sir. Sir, please, do respect, do respect. I'm trying to talk. All right, the thing is, is we're talking about 14,000 citizens that have the capability of all writing to their senate, to their senators, their house reps, writing to our state government to think that this is, there's got to be a better solution. And if you don't think that 14,000 citizens that speaking up can make a change, then that's a problem.
No, it's not. It's not that. It's not that at all. But you have to correct the freeway that we had. The freeway that was in place before we built what we have.
Exactly.
Was terrible. It was horrible.
But what do you take and you make a change that makes it more equitable for the people who normally have to take that?
Aren't we grown up enough and educated enough to realize that when we start a construction project, there's going to be pains?
Condescending remarks? That's what you're coming here with?
No, I'm serious. I mean, I understand. I do understand.
You just asked me if we're grown up enough? We're frustrated with what's going on here. We're frustrated that TextDOT thinks it's okay to look at a sound study from 12 years ago, eight years before you even began a project, didn't even put into consideration that we removed every building on the north, I'm sorry, on the southbound side of 146. You removed an entire railway with a four-foot berm and all the vegetation. And somewhere, somewhere, somebody looked at that and said, "Hold on. This should be good enough. A 45 mile an hour zone with traffic packed at 5 o'clock, is it better that there's not traffic here?" Sure. But at the same time, you're also, that traffic didn't reduce the value of people's homes. We're talking about $10, $15 million worth of property that's going down in value, which, by the way, I don't know if you know this or not, hurts our taxes too.
All right, is there a question on the project?
The question is, is at what point are you going to stop and reassess our sound? What do we have to do as citizens to fix it?
We've addressed, I will get back with them and we'll see if there's further answers from higher up. But I think we've gotten the answer as far as the environmentals that we have now. Is there another question?
My question is, what did the 2013 sound study, what was the project that it was needed?
It was this same project, this project that was, the sound study was done for this project, yes, ma'am. Because these projects, these projects are, like, these projects are long-term under planning and they go through the planning phase to development phase. So the environmental studies are done in the early phases when.
She had asked and I didn't, I don't know if I for sure understood the answer, but the threshold? Like, what constitutes needing a sound barrier on a project like this? Do you know that?
I have to check back and I'll circle back with you on it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, like, is it a decibel thing?
Yes, I just have to check to give you the exact numbers, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, one last question, going back to the southbound exit onto Red Bluff, okay? One or two months, two or three months, having an exit like that closed, it's inconvenient, but it's a reasonable expectation. Closing that off for two-plus years, okay, without making any type of temporary means to get off is completely unreasonable. And I would argue that if you go on 40, I mean, we're used to road construction in the Houston area, unfortunately. And wherever else they're working on roads, they make accommodations for temporary exits, okay? Why is this the exception that you guys haven't made a provision for temporary exit to get off of southbound 146 onto Red Bluff? And the second question I have is, since they're not working on the bridge, and I'm sorry, I don't care what you say. If you go out there, I don't see anybody out there on that bridge working. The U-turn on the northbound to the southbound side is closed. There's nothing going on. Why can't you all open that up while you're not doing any work there? Okay, I think that your contractor's just being lazy, to be honest with you. Okay, so you know, I just need to do a little bit better job enforcing your contractor. And I really would go back and challenge you all to come up with a temporary solution so you're not blocking off access from 146 South to Red Bluff.
Yes, sir. Well, I've taken your point and we will definitely circle back. Thank you for bringing those up.
I guess I'm confused about the traffic coming from La Porte, which is from going south on 146. These people normally get off at Red Bluff. For two years, where are these people, where are they supposed to go? Or are they, is there a place where they're going to turn onto Red Bluff and go through our neighborhood? Or how are they going to get to the, down to 146, down south?
Ma'am, I've noted this point. I'm going to see and get back with you. Let me check with the designers and what we can do. I dig that one.
Extremely important. And I just don't, I don't understand why this is taking place so late that all of this hasn't already been finalized.
Thank you for your input.
Our other project that TextDOT will kind of update us on is part of this Red Bluff to Spencer project is the intersection. So we've seen an asphalt overlay, but there's additional improvements that are planned for this. And then the T-section that you see on the exhibit on the monitors, these are the limits that TextDOT has maintenance control as it goes out onto old 146. So this has been labeled the intersection or the old 146 expansion. So I'll let TextDOT just touch a little bit on this project and timing on when we would see activity in this area.
Can I have the next slide? I think, no, that's, okay, I was looking at something else. But anyways, you can go back to that. Gail, I have looked at this. We had two options. There was some utilities that were here with the center point. H poles were there and with a lot of utilities. Those have been cleared. And we have just got underground left that remains to be relocated. We are looking into different options of funding. I have, we have looked at doing a change order to this current project. We are asking our contractor to give us the pricing for that. And also, depending on what the pricing is and how we can move forward on the change order. Or we can, I have presented to the new administration, because we know we have administration change in our department. So I have to provide him all the price and price breakdowns of what the contractor's going to do with the change order or it's going to be funded through a different CSJ. So it depends on what the price tag is on that. So, but the utilities have moved, so that's a big accomplishment.
So if this project stays in the current Red Bluff to Spencer package, when it does happen, the community, most likely the entire intersection, will be closed down while this is reconstructed?
That was the plan to close down that and construct that. But we can, if that causes a lot of problems, then we can definitely look into phasing the way we can do, build half and half. If we close it, the whole thing, it comes, it gets done fairly quickly. But if it becomes more of an access issue, then we can certainly look into building it half and half.
And this portion of the project, this is still a five-year project going down to Spencer. So this one is pushed to the later phases of the five years?
Currently, they have, the reason why it got delayed because we had utilities and we asked the contractor to give us a price tag and how much it's going to cost. But they said, "Till it gets closer and you guys have it, all the utilities relocated, we will not give you a price because then we get locked into that." So currently, we are in that position now that the utilities have moved and we are going to get the pricing from them and move forward and see how we can fund this project.
Okay. So can y'all just talk a little bit, it's a little bit small on the exhibit party for the audience, but the ultimate design on that intersection would be going to four lanes with turn lanes. So ultimately, six in that intersection area. And then old 146, long-term, is starting to become a four-lane, correct?
I don't know about the old 146, but this is what the design, revised design is for this little piece of red.
Okay.
I have to look up if there's anything on the old 146.
Okay, so this one's pushed, this one's probably a couple of years out as well.
Yeah, this is going to be, depending on what, how we get the funding for it, either if it's a new CSJ or if it's tagged onto the CSJ, did that little determine how soon we can get that?
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this project?
All right, so on this particular project, one of the things that we've spoken about in the past is the ability for DOT officers to be able to potentially pull over and scale trucks. Since we are currently in the waiting game, waiting for utilities and such to be moved, is it at all possible to get, while we're in that waiting process, is it at all possible for us to get it changed so that on the westbound side or on the, on the, I'm sorry, I said the westbound side. Yeah, the westbound side or the eastbound side, either side, to get some area like La Porte has underneath the bridge at Barbers Cut, where we can actually have like a truck stop area where we can have DOT officers wave in trucks so that they can get weighed? Because the biggest problem that most of the people have in that area, the neck of the woods, the residents, where they have their problem is, is the trucks trying to come from the warehouse and they get stuck there. And yes, things are going to get better, but it's still not going to be perfect traffic. There's a stoplight. And so what they do is they try to go around it and they wind up going straight and they go back into the neighborhoods. And we've had three trucks in the last, I think, two years get stuck in ditches. More than that, I'm sorry. Well, unfortunately, I live over there, so I don't keep up with the count. But if it's possible for Seabrook to get DOT officers and mobile scales, and if we can operate that intersection in the exact same way that La Porte operates the Barbers Cut intersection, it can help push truck traffic down to the Port Road on-ramp and keep them off of our city streets. And so I know, I know we're asking about completely re-engineering portions of this, but that would be a massive help to the city of Seabrook, I guarantee.
So let me speak on that one. We previously slotted a capital improvement project for that intersection. And when the port speaks in a little bit, when we talk about the at-grade southern access road, that ends up being the area that TextDOT had some land that we were negotiating to try to do a stop. So in the future, we're trying to figure out the timing of these projects and that capital project fell off our list at this point. So there has been some internal discussions. And then we're, you know, in the midst of training additional personnel. So we've got a couple of hurdles on that, but it is on our radar. Yep.
So you had mentioned that if this becomes an access problem, then it'll be split into two parts. The way you said it made it sound kind of like, "We'll do it and see what happens." I don't think that's what you meant. I'd like to clarify.
No, I, sorry if I confused you. If it becomes more of a, like, we can, right now, it's in a design phase. So we can do a lot with that. Depending, sometimes we just, we can split the traffic control. Normally, the contractor would like to have full access to the property and they can just go ahead and blow and go and just get it done quickly. That's easy for them rather than managing the traffic. So in this situation, I think we, if we can create the traffic control, if that is access to businesses or something gets, by closing it causes the community more problems, then we can just phase it half and half and then move the traffic into the new built half and then come back and build it. So we still have the luxury because we are still in the design phase of it.
To clarify my question, how and when is that decision going to be made?
Well, as soon as I can, I can get the funding allocated for it through change order or new CSJ, we can get your input, get the city's input, and we can do that.
That study is on the docket today?
Say what, sir?
That study is going, is planned to be done?
Well, it's not more of a study. It's kind of a design thing that we can do traffic control. Yeah, we can do that. That's not big of an ask. We can do that. The only thing is, is just the funding right now is where we want to get, make sure that we have the funding to do that.
What I'm pressing on is, as I'm hearing, kind of fuzzy language, is going to get done?
Well, that's what, that's what all depends on the funding right now. Funding determines it. Right now, we were initially planning to put it as a change order with this current project. And that was the way we were still moving forward with that. Change orders are, these days, have been a little bit tough to get change orders through. So what we have done, like what we did with your boat ramp project, I'm not sure if you're aware of that. We had assigned a new CSJ to that and that helped us with that project. So it does take a little time to get that done when you have a new CSJ assigned.
What's a CSJ? I don't know what that is. CSJ, could you clarify?
CSJ is basically control section job. So once we, all our projects are basically, have a CSJ associated with them. And once we create the new, or to be in layman's language, if it's a new project, completely new project, not connected with this 146 expansion, then it's a separate CSJ and we get the funding for it. then it's a separate CSJ and we get the funding for it as a separate CSJ. Normally, what has been in the past, we have tagged on to these old projects. But AGSC and some of the other agency that holds the funding and the federal government and all these people that are getting involved in the funding, they don't like these add-ons to certain projects. And that has been, we have been financially constrained to do those kind of things. In the past, we were able to do that a lot. Right now, it's been a little bit tight. So that's why I sent the proposal to the district, but he wants to get the numbers and see where we are on the funding. If the numbers add up and everything goes through, then we can just add it on to this 087 project. If the numbers are big and if they cannot tag it on to it, they're going to assign a separate CSJ or separate project, sorry. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Not really, I'm not sure I'm going to get an answer.
Agreed. I have one question real quick about the, we are currently, we just approved new tree planting all along. That, do they know that this is coming? Because that's just a huge waste of tree planting.
So the green ribbon is, we're working directly with TechDOT. So it's a TechDOT contract, so they are communicating some of the changes that happened that we've been reporting back to councils. There were some trees that were under power lines, those are getting moved. The planting that you saw on the one detention pond and then there'll be planting that's happening where the Weber camp is on the other corner, that's all part of this project. But yes, it's run by TechDOT, so they do communicate on that.
And they're not going to have to cut trees down in a couple of years because it's, they're widening the road. They've made the placement accurately. That's my question.
Yes, and that's why we had a designer because he's worked directly with landscaping at TechDOT because they have those type of requirements.
Over here. Can you hear me? Okay, this is to TechDOT. So number two here, is this like a different project or is this all considered one big project? Going back to the sound study, can't we just tag the next sound study onto this project or one of these other projects? And inherently, it sounds like TechDOT has a challenge with the sound study doing it before and not verifying after the fact. So process challenges for TechDOT. But, so back to my question. Can we tag the sound study onto project number two here or one of the other ones we're working on?
Well, this is too small of a project to tag a sound study. And then this is basically, it is like, they do the sound study with the project where this project is. They can't do the sound study in a different location, tag it on to this one. But I'm going to reach out to the, again, to the environmental section and to the TPND director and RDE that the community is asking for the sound study. And there's a strong request for having a sound study done. Then I'll move it up the chain to get that.
So it should be done, part of your policy, just before and after, period. Whenever you build a highway. Not before and never again.
I hear you.
See, that, what Mike just said makes a lot of sense. It's, if you did a study on a road that the people travel 35 miles an hour because it was a 35 mile an hour speed limit and you had to come to three or four intersections from Red Bluff all the way to NASA 1 or actually the Seabrook-Kema Bridge, well, people are going and then stopping, going, stopping. And the road was flat. Now it's 65 and there's two overpasses. That's why. So when I heard that the study was done in 2013, I was shocked that whether you're using it now, they'd be like, well, Astros won tonight, so they win Saturday night too. Saturday's games, not even have to play it because they won. With that kind of logic, see how goofy that is? So that's why the people are super frustrated. So the other thing I'm super frustrated about is we were told here at council that we were going to have a whole bunch of trees and plants all along 146. A whole bunch, the whole place was going to be trees. In fact, it was going to be a destination to come see them. We got a bunch of rocks for 1.9 million bucks. You know, it might have been, you know, $50 trillion in rocks is what we got. So I don't get it. And so this is the part that I'm frustrated with. Where's the plants? Now we have, now we're told, after one year, we take care of the plants. What's there, very little. But now there's a ton of weeds already. People have already been telling me at Dairy Queen that we have a whole bunch of weeds along 146 where all the rocks are. How's that going to get taken care of? You know, so.
They already put sod on there. The sod was put on Thursday.
I understand that sod, that's on the edge. But like Dairy Queen doesn't even have a curb. It was, they're supposed to, I think there's supposed to be a curb because where the taco place is, they put a curb there. But the steepness at Dairy Queen is just as steep or steeper and there's no curb. So all that mud and dirt washes into his drive-through. But anyway, the point I'm talking about is under 146 at NASA 1, that's supposed to be a bunch of plants, what we were told. Now it's a bunch of rocks. But now there's weeds there. So how do you get rid of the weeds? Because if you use poison, that poison's going to run off into the bay in the estuary right there and then kills the animals. So now what do you do? So how's that going to get fixed? So that's an issue that a bunch of people have been talking about. We've already talked about it here. But these are the kind of things that, it's just frustrating. Because it could have been, because you go to other places and there's plants everywhere at their intersections and we got a bunch of rocks.
Yeah, and the landscaping project is.
Underway, so the off-site in case. Pretty much I've got all the vegetation plant.
So.
Mostly around the detention ponds and so forth. But you know, our landscape engineer is the one that designed the plan set for the Green Ribbon project and city had some involvement in that as far as I know. And the rocks and so forth, that was taken off the 116 project because you guys or somebody didn't, I don't know why, why took them out, but they were taken out. And so it saved quite a bit of money so we could do the Green Ribbon project. And that's where the landscape is.
And that's why we're here. This is called a town hall. By the way, guys, I'm not mad at you and I'm not mad at you guys. What this is, is a town hall. If you actually look what a town hall says, it's where the people come and get to talk to the city leaders who sit up there, not where you guys are. The city leaders sit up here and the people ask us questions and we get to talk back and forth, unlike regular meetings where we can't. Yet every time we ask for a town hall, this kind of stuff happens where you guys give a 10-minute, 15-minute presentation, which in a sense to me filibusters on the time for them to ask the questions. Because really, it's the people. I work for them. This is not me, but I've lived here since 66, so I know a lot what's going on. But that's why people get so frustrated. So why we had this setup like this is beyond me. I don't understand, I'll have to get on someone else about it, but I'm not happy about it. This was wrong, it wasn't supposed to be like this. It was supposed to be all questions to us and we answer them. And if we needed you, then we ask you to step up and answer the question, not this style.
Hi, my name is Terry. I represent 15 houses in the Parker Lake HOA, not too far from here. Please come to my house. We'll start about 1 o'clock in the morning, let the dog out, this is the traffic and you won't hear. About 3 o'clock, it's dead silent. Get up, let the dog out at 4 o'clock, it's loud, really loud. And then I go to work at 6, so I don't know what happens after that. But you're welcome to come, you can stay at my house.
I have one more question. I wanted to see if there was a timeline to clean up like the rubble and all the concrete debris and everything on 146 and East Meyer. That's been kind of a pain point for a lot of people within the city.
Next to the McDonald's?
There's, yeah.
Well, that, you know, that's not our, that was a separate project that the city led. So we've been talking to the city manager.
Yeah, I think we just got an email. Most of that was moved out, I believe. So they did the pickup already. It ended up being the county. So the county that did the sidewalk project, they had to trace it back to that contractor.
What about the rest? Because I know there's still some pretty large pieces sitting over there. It looks pretty nasty.
I'll have to check. I mean, I think what, they were supposed to pick everything up.
They got the concrete and the asphalt. I think there's still blocks out there. If TechDOT doesn't want it, we can come get it. There's also like a big debris pile, but it wasn't the contractors. I'm not sure who put that there. Wood, wood and vegetation, there's a big pile, but it wasn't the contractor.
All of it, bar, concrete. So is the city going to take on us of that or is TechDOT like?
Sounds like we may have to do some of that. We were trying, the bulk of it, we were trying to impress that it was the contractor that left all that. So now that that part's gone, whatever the remnants are, we'll look at that next.
Okay, thank you.
Is this on? I guess. I hate to bring this back up, but I'd like to go back up to the Red Bluff intersection. And this is a little confusing to some of us, all of this. Part of it's the Port of Houston, part of it's TechDOT. I live at the north end of Seabrook, as do quite a few of us. And if Red Bluff is going to have a lot of truck traffic because that's going to be the way that it's designed, then the only, we really can't use Port Road. And if Red Bluff is blocked off, we would have to go all the way to Meyer to really get out to go south, to go north. Is, am I understanding this correctly? And the second part of the question is, there's a preliminary discussion about an additional road out from the port. If that road is built, would that alleviate the need to shut down Red Bluff for two years?
We're not shutting, she's talking about the exit ramp. Because the exit ramp is going to be closed probably in another year or so.
Well, we are going to look at that, you're talking about the exit ramp, ma'am, for the Red Bluff?
There's a discussion at the port of putting, there's only one way out right now. We've had so many problems as one of the gentleman's trucks going into a ditch blocking traffic. It becomes a hazard if something happens on one street. It could, it could block everybody in.
Deborah, we're going to also talk about the Southern Access Road, which I think is what you're referencing with the port here in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to Port of Houston authority that's here and we'll talk a little bit about the road that was just asked about in their project. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Gail. I wanted to say thank you to the city for allowing us to come back and, you know, advance the conversation. We were here late last year, you know, where we presented this concept of the, what we're calling the Southern Access Road. For those of you that I haven't met, Ryan Mariakar, Port Houston, working our ops division. I'm going to be brief in my remarks, so we have a good amount of time for as much conversation. I can answer as many questions as you have. I'm not the expert, that's why I brought my experts with me. Really, at the end of the day, you know, Port Houston is about, we're a small part of the Houston Ship Channel who is about job creation, supporting the economy, driving the economy forward. Recent studies show that, you know, the entire Houston Ship Channel generates about 1.5 million jobs in Texas, 3 million jobs across the US, driving about 906 billion of economic activity. But bringing that closer to home and what that means to you, there's a lot of good that comes with that, but there's a lot of challenges that come with that. The container terminals, Bay Port specifically, which is, you know, in your backyard, has seen a lot of growth, you know, in the last several years. An accelerated growth in the post-COVID recovery supply chain that we've all lived through. And with that, you know, comes challenges. And, you know, we've seen challenges when it comes to traffic, just to be direct and say it that way. So rather than, you know, state the obvious and say, hey, there's a problem, we wanted to come forward with a, you know, identifying the problem and a proposed solution. And we presented that to the group late last year. And want to provide this opportunity to kind of advance the conversation here back. So, you know, our concept, if you weren't in the previous meeting, just to give you a little bit of background is today, as was mentioned earlier, you know, primarily in the Bay Port complex, there's one way in and one way out. And with the amount of traffic that we see today, that's a problem. So we want to have a dual point of entry and exit, all the while improving infrastructure, improving connectivity while we're doing things different inside the footprint of the facility and partnering better with industry to reduce those peak traffic times that you're seeing today. So back to the project, you know, the goal is building a road that connects 146 to the Bay Port complex in a few different phases, provide that secondary access in and out. You know, just provide relief for the entire complex overall. And it's not just for trucks, it's for, you know, all-vehicle access in and around the area. So, you know, really, I kind of beg it, I kind of break it down into three phases of, you know, how do we do more in, you know, the hours that we currently operate? How do we force industry adoption to expand into additional hours all the while? How do we expand support infrastructure? So, you know, it's improved connectivity overall. So where are we at in the process? You know, late last year, we brought to you a concept. We've been doing preliminary design work. We actually kicked off with a detailed design engineer firm this week to begin that process, which we hope to wrap up by the end of the year. And, you know, our commitment is to engage with all of our stakeholders. And, you know, this is one of many touchpoints where we've gotten a lot of feedback already that will help us start designing things on the right foot. And then at a 30% design review, be able to come back and then get additional feedback. So that's the plan of where we're at. Gail, if you could move on. Essentially, it's, you know, like I said, connecting 146 to the Bay Port complex on our property, you know, through the alignment that we shared before. Nothing's really changed dramatically there. You know, it'll be running along the perimeter of the berm and then cut through where her cursor is walking or, you know, kind of running through the screen right now. So in a nutshell, that's the plan. This will likely be broken down into phases so we can accelerate the project. Design completing at the end of the year. We hope for the first phase to begin as early as, you know, first of '26 with subsequent phases to be determined as we work through the project. There was a question about flyovers. The plan does have, you know, potential flyovers, just like we have on and off of Port Road. Timeline unknown at this time. We're working with TechDOT to better understand what that could look like. But the goal is to fast-track the first phase to provide relief as quickly as possible to the area. So this kind of states what I already said. If we can move on to the next one so we can get to you questions. The other update, you know, that we want to provide is on the rail spur that, you know, has neared completion. You guys have seen it, obviously. So we expect it to be done in the next couple of months. Minor signaling, pavement, striping, you know, kind of punchless items, we'll finish that out. Continuing to pursue the quiet zone designation. The initial user of that rail spur, the facility that needs that connectivity is under construction today and they expect to be complete and up and running by the end of the year. So that's when you'll see that area in use. With that, I'm going to stop and we'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for coming out. One thing I've noticed is that the current backup at times goes all the way back to 225, just about, through Laporte or whatever. And it looks like the bottleneck is checking trucks into your facility. Okay? It doesn't matter how many lanes that road is. If the bottleneck is at to check into the facility, you're just wasting money, right? What are you guys doing to improve the ability to get trucks into the port so it doesn't back up all the way up onto 146 and however far back it goes? Because right now, it just seems like that process is either, there's. Because right now, it just seems like that process is either, there's either not enough capacity there, or the process is too slow, or you know better than I do. All I know is I see trucks backed up from where they entered the port all the way back. Okay? Yeah, that's the question. And the other question I had, referring to rail spur, you said that a customer, is that a chemical plant that's being built? Or is that going to be containers for the port to primarily go use that spur?
Thank you for those questions. I'll take the second one first. The tenant that's building a facility right now, it's a resin packaging warehouse. So they'll be bringing in product via railcar, packaging it into sacks, and then placing it into either containers if they're for export, or, you know, drive-in trucks if they're domestic.
So that has nothing to do with reducing the number of containers that are on the road?
I don't see how that would be a reduction.
Okay, so that's for something other than the port?
It's just, you know, polyethylene shipments, you know, supporting, you know, manufacturing in the region is one of the major products that we handle. One in three of our exports is some kind of polyethylene product that's manufactured in the region. So it's more of what we see today, if that makes sense.
Okay, the hope was that spur would be used for getting containers in and out of the port to take some of the traffic off of the roads. But what I'm hearing now is that's for additional goods that are not related directly moving containers in and out of the port property. Fair assessment?
Well, it's delivering product to a packaging facility. And I think what you're referencing is, you know, the Bay Port Master Plan continues to show the potential of an intermodal facility for that. But that's a future project that's not part of what you're seeing today.
Okay, so my last question on that, and then I'd like you to talk to my first question.
Sure.
Is with all the traffic and all the vehicles going in and out, why aren't you guys looking at putting an intermodal rail facility in that facility? Why isn't that being accelerated?
Well, it's a really good question, and it kind of goes into your first question, and I'll take both. We're unique in the market that we serve where between 70 and 80% of the containers that we handle are either origin or destined for Texas in kind of a 250-mile reach from the port. So it's market-driven, where there's not a whole lot of desire for the market to support a rail connection for that short of a transit. You know, our core value as the terminal operator, as Port Houston, is to support the local and regional economy in the state of Texas. And because of that, you know, railing to, you know, Katy or Baytown doesn't necessarily make economical sense. So going back to your earlier comment, they definitely tie together. You said that this could be viewed as throwing money at bad and not solving the problem. Let me just, we understand the concern and we understand the frequency of trucks that we see. You know, peak periods, we've got a truck arriving every two to three seconds. So it's imperative that we keep up with that. And we've done several things within the terminal footprint to improve service levels. The biggest thing that you don't see is last year, we implemented a mandatory appointment system, pre-advised system. And we worked very closely with industry partners to make sure that worked, going back to working with, you know, or supporting a local market, a bit more challenging than where you go to other major gateways, and it's a lot further distance, and there's a lot more time to set those parameters up. So we went from less than 10% of our transactions being what we call pre-advised. Basically, you give us a heads up of what you're doing before you get there. To today, that number's between 16 and 80%, and that reduces transactions significantly from, you know, a couple of minutes to less than 10 seconds. So we're able to accelerate those truck trips, or the truck visits through the gate complex so you don't see those backups backing out of the gate complex onto the public road, because that's unacceptable for us. And also, since we were able to push trucks into the yard faster, we had to turn trucks faster. So it doesn't matter if you move the bottleneck from the in gate to the yard. If you just gridlock the yard, it doesn't do you any good. So we've also made significant improvements in how we deploy our equipment, improving our yard productivity by 20, 25% by implementing really cutting-edge technologies that are just becoming available out there to be able to support the number of moves that we're doing each day. So we're very focused on not moving the bottleneck, but streamlining the entire process and making sure that trucks turn and get in and out in a fluid fashion. With that, you know, as part of the process, we realized with the amount of traffic we're seeing today and the amount of traffic that we're going to continue to see moving forward, part of that is, you know, kind of what we just mentioned, doing more with what you have. Today, you know, our gates are open Monday through Fridays, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So we want to reduce the peaks in traffic, flatten out the arrival patterns, provide more, you know, consistent service without those peaks. And then also provide a toolset to allow industry partners to adopt to other hours of service across the week. And that's not a new concept. We've experimented with that several times in the past eight years, and we're going to continue to work towards a solution that works for highly utilized hours. And the third piece of that is adding infrastructure to support it. Because what we can't out-engineer unfortunately is, you know, the fender bender that gridlocks Port Road, the slow truck that's climbing over the single lane flyover that will back traffic up. And, you know, we've been able to out-engineer a lot of those challenges, but we can't out-engineer those one-off scenarios. And with the frequency of traffic that we're seeing, you can't do it with one way in, one way out, which is why we proposed this alternate access. So it gives you choice when, you know, even in a peak arrival time, you just need the added capacity.
One more quick question. Okay, real fast. And this maybe goes to Tech Dot as well as the city. There's nothing more frustrating than trying to drive north or south on 146. And it happens more going north than south. But having the one truck that's doing 40 miles an hour and another truck that can only go 41 miles an hour try to pass it. So you basically have this rolling roadblock the whole way up 146. Can we basically make 146 until you put extra lanes on that road? Left lane, no trucks in both directions? Well, then you guys have a good source of revenue. Just put the cops out there, you put enough, pull enough people over, give enough tickets out there, they'll get the message. Okay? Or we make a lot of money, or the state makes some money off of these truckers, one way or the other. Because it's very frustrating having to deal with that. Okay? And that's another choke point. At least if the trucks are stuck in one lane, they're own device, you know? So that's another suggestion I'd just like to throw out there for everyone's consideration, because I think that would help.
The question. I actually have two questions. One is on the rail. On Port Road frequently, the trains will block the entire road while they, I guess, add or subtract cars. Is that going to happen with this new rail that goes across 146?
Oh, you're talking about the rail crossing on Port Road where they're switching in and out of their facilities?
Yes.
So the way the rail spur was designed was to not have that be a blocked crossing during certain hours?
You're talking about 146, this new rail that's coming across 146?
Correct, correct. So part of the, part of the construction, if you see it out there, it's what the, what's being built? We've had a question of, there's a lot of dirt being moved in that area, and is that already work being done for the road? And the answer is no. What's being done is there's going to be a series of storage tracks that are built off of that to help support the warehouse to reduce any of the crossing issues that you're referencing. I know exactly what you're referencing.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that it's not going to be blocked like Port Road is. Am I hearing that right?
Correct, correct. And, you know, we're just as concerned about when Port Road's blocked. And we've actually been able to improve our communication with the different groups. There's dedicated hours that it's supposed to happen. But when it happens in the non-dedicated hours, it's when it's a problem. But we're working on that.
The question that I asked before, if this secondary road is built, would that alleviate the need to redesign the Red Bluff intersection? Could we leave it like it is, get this other road built and have the trucks? Wouldn't that avoid the trucks having to go into that intersection? Therefore, leaving it more available for car traffic and not as much backup?
So I'm not sure I can, you know, I might defer that one to Tech Dot. I don't know how the timing works, or if one replaces the other. You know, I think from our perspective, we're trying to move forward as quickly as possible for the Southern Access Road to provide relief and, you know, added capacity in the area. I don't know how it would mesh or alleviate any changes to the Red Bluff intersection.
The biggest problem we have is all the truck traffic that's now going to be going on to Red Bluff, leaving the whole north end of Seabrook with no way to go north without having to go all the way down to Meyer. And we're at the highest elevation in this city, and our entire city's being pushed to the lowest elevation. It's concerning. Where at least if we had that secondary route outside of the port, the trucks could be on that, leaving the intersection at Red Bluff is, at least that's how it seems to me. I don't know a lot about that. So is that something that would alleviate two years of having Red Bluff shut down?
So.
The secondary road that, call it the Southern Access?
That's what we're calling it.
Okay.
In the long run, in the long run, that's what we'd like to see. We'd like to see no trucks hitting Red Bluff or Old 146 between 146 and the Bay Port Southern Access Road. It's going to, to echo what the mayor just said, it's going to take at least 10 years minimum to get the direct connectors constructed between 146 and Bay Port Southern Access Road. We've brought everything here to Seabrook first. We're showing you our plans as we're making them. So we are just now working on the first phases of getting that planned by engaging with HGAC. That's like step zero out of many to get the direct connectors, the flyover ramps funded. So that's, we have the same vision that you have, which is to separate the trucks from the passenger vehicles. But it's going to be a while till we get there.
Is there anything we can do to expedite it?
Yes, well, the way that, to get a little nerdy on you, the way these kind of projects are funded is through a regional organization called Houston Galveston Area Council. So when we're ready to put the project on the regional transportation plan, which is that first step in getting, making it a Tech Dot project, we're going to come to all our partners in the region and ask for their support. That's going to include the Harris County, your Harris County Commissioner, City of Seabrook, BayHEP, and any other organizations in the region. We'll appreciate their support as we try to get that project.
We'd sure like to see that put on the fast track.
We agree.
And really, that's why we're building it in phases so we can fast track it. If we waited for the whole thing to be completely approved and funded, you wouldn't see the first phase for, you know, the better part of a decade, and we know that's not good enough. That's why I brought experts with me.
So let me get this straight. We're going to build the second, the Southern Access Road, which is going to be a grade-level road, which is going to end up at Old 146 and Red Bluff Road. Right? And that's going to go in place and be done within the next couple of years. Right? And then it's going to be 10 years or more before we put flyovers in. All right? Nobody sees a problem with that. What do you think the trucks are going to do? The trucks who are backed up right now on the flyover or whatever are just going to go down to Red Bluff and jam that intersection up also? I'll tell you what, Gail, and the city council, I would say right now, thumbs down to this. Build the flyovers first, so the trucks have a way of getting in and out without hitting the local city streets. Okay? We're inundated with trucks as it is. I can't tell you how many trucks are going down Nasser Road 1, and these trucks are flying. They're not paying attention to the laws. And it's just a matter of time before one of these trucks runs over a school bus or something else. Okay? And we're building another road to encourage more trucks to go on our local roads. We are freaking nuts. We are absolutely nuts, and you guys are not doing your job if you let this go through. Period. Okay? Build the flyovers first. I promise you, you have the money to do it, if you want to do it. Okay? You just have to look at all the traffic that's going in and out there. If you're crying poor that you don't have the money to do this, not believable. Okay?
I was on council at the beginning of Yarles Project in 1998. I've seen the plan from the start. What we were told is that at maximum buildout, you would be running about 7,000 trucks a day through that facility. I noticed a few weeks ago, you guys hit a number over 11,000 trucks in one day. And also in this study that I read, by putting in the rail system, you estimate that it's going to save you $18 million a year just in fuel cost, downtime, all of those issues. So I think that I misunderstood, or maybe we got confused with his question regarding the rail system. Your design long-term is to have a rail system that hauls containers from your facility and distributes them, correct?
So let me take that, there's a couple of things there. The 11,000 trucks that you referenced, that was a combined number between Bay Port and Barber's Cut. Today, Bay Port sees about 6,000 trucks a day.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understood the question about the 18% comment, but.
Well, it wasn't 18%, it was $18 million annually. Your, the port's savings in becoming more efficient, if you will, and getting those trucks in and out and stopping this traffic, or helping this traffic issue that you're running into.
So since you were, you know, since you've had visibility to this to the beginning, you know, it's interesting to see how the markets evolved over time, because there were a lot of assumptions that the intermodal piece or the rail connectivity piece was going to be a bigger piece of the market that we served. Today, you know, the majority of containers that we see moved are moved via truck. Which is, you know. Which is why we're here talking about proposed solutions to, you know, reduce the traffic congestion in the area. Go ahead.
Again, the question is, I've seen your design on your rail yard. And originally in this system, basically where you're talking about putting this new road was a rail system that made that loop and picked up containers to exit. Okay? Is that being changed now? Are you not planning on doing that?
So the good thing about this is that it keeps the future alignment for rail connectivity in place. It doesn't replace that. This is an addendum to that. And this is actually reintroducing a concept that was very, it was one of the original concepts of the master plan, but it was actually POV-driven in the original master plan. And we're adjusting it to be just traffic-driven.
Okay, but what I'm hearing you saying is that y'all haven't nixed the idea of having that loop by rail, but you're reconsidering how to align all of that. Is that correct?
Well, we reserve the rail alignment, so, you know, if the market dictates that we can do that and we would like to do that, that remains kind of a strategic goal of ours to improve rail connectivity to the markets that we're growing into. That remains a future opportunity, absolutely.
And the other thing that I would say, and then I'll leave you alone. I think that there's maybe a misunderstanding of this group and the public. there's maybe a misunderstanding of this group and the public in Seabrook that, and maybe it's not a misunderstanding, but the fact of the matter is that you guys have implemented a plan since 1998 that would be impressive to anybody that looked at economics and building something, okay? Y'all had a plan in 1998, and you have gone step by step to get that done. That may be good for y'all. I don't think that it's good for Seabrook. On the other hand, you are so big and powerful economically and for the nation in the points that you made, there's not really, you can come here and be very nice and informative to all of these people, but the fact of the matter is, someone mentioned about not letting council do this. The fact of the matter is, and I would like you to let the people know, this council doesn't control any of thing of what the Port of Houston does. And you guys have implemented your program all the way down the line, and again, if I'm in the business world looking at what you do, it's very impressive, but this community is in a situation, you know, when you project your, your trucks and you turn the kind of volume that you do, the foresight there is very important. One of the things that I recommended to your management in the beginning of this is to put an HOV-type lane at Port Road going all the way to 225, to where these trucks never entered traffic with these citizens. And you know what they said? "That's a great idea, Ted, but Text Dot has to do that. We can't do that. Text Dot has to do it." Okay. The power that y'all have, being the Port of Houston and the economic power that you are, you can just about do whatever you wanna do, and I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm saying y'all have all those connections, you have all of the ability to, to really state what is best for you. And then the last thing that I'll say is, the Red Bluff, the original design I saw on Red Bluff in the flyover was a 60-foot flyover going to Red Bluff, and that's ultimately going to be a freeway that goes all the way to 225. Now, whether anybody wants to talk about that or discuss it is a whole different issue, but historically, you guys all have pretty much done what you want. And you come here and, I appreciate that, that you come here, but I just want them to realize that they're not changing your program. And with the de-annexation that just took place, now they really, you call them a stakeholder or you call them a partnership, but in reality, there's not a partnership. They may be a stakeholder that you would like them to go to HGAC and, and support what you're doing, but the fact of the matter is that after the de-annexation, I think that, or dis-annexation, I think that Seabrook, Seabrook is pretty much out of the picture. And you don't have to comment on that one way or the other. I appreciate y'all being here, but I don't really think this council or the next council really has any control over anything that you do. And the economics are what bother me the most is that, that, that you guys deal in these multi-billion dollar projects, and the Seabrook gets $4 million for a annex, a de-annex, dis-annexation. I mean, that is almost insulting to anyone that we watch this economic power and we have these issues, and no one really cares at the port to financially help Seabrook and the taxpayers of Seabrook, but in my opinion, serve lip service to it. So thank you for listening.
So, you know, I do wanna say one thing, and I appreciate the comments. You know, part of, part of who we are is not just, you know, running the business, it's also, you know, truly being a, a good neighbor, and part of that is coming and talking to you all and getting feedback. But also the other part of it is, you know, a lot of the folks that work on our facilities live in the area, you know, so it's not paying lip service, and I could, I could see, you know, that side of it, but, you know, we're here, we're doing these things, you know, not just to check a box, you know? We truly do, you know, realize that there's an issue, and, you know, the trucks are in the area because they're in large part coming in and out of the container terminal. You know, let's just state the obvious, right? And, you know, we could just say, oh, it's fine, we're gonna deal with it, we're gonna keep growing, but instead, you know, we wanna take the approach of, we wanna be part of the solution, and part of that is coming to, you know, groups in all the surrounding municipalities and being open and transparent and providing opportunity for feedback about how we can make it better together.
But I understand what you said, and I appreciate it, but in reality, I think that it's incumbent on you guys to make it clear that this council doesn't control anything related to this. And I, I'm just trying to be honest with these folks, and if you disagree with me about that, and they do have some control over something, I want you to tell them so. But I, I've been through this since 1998, and I've watched you guys all the way through, and frankly, again, you have done it pretty much step by step on what you originally planned on doing.
Let me jump in there. Make it, make it worth that they brought me here, you know? I won't get to get on anymore. I mean, you know, at this point, might as well. I think it functions a little bit like when the citizens come to City Hall to speak with elected officials, right? You are gonna voice what you want and what you believe in, and you, and you voted for them, and, and there's the expectation that there's gonna be a consensus, a negotiation, a something, right? The port views their relationships with a lot of the cities the same way. I mean, and you know, they're elected officials. They could potentially do what they want, you just won't choose them next time. But technically, while they're elected, they can do quite a range of things. You just won't vote in them again, or maybe you will, I don't know. The port functions similarly when it comes to the cities. We, it is, it's a conversation, sometimes it's a negotiation. Yes, the port is big, and it can be mighty, but I promise you, if we didn't have, if we didn't see value in what you guys have to say, we wouldn't know a lot of the faces here. And we do, we go to Sea Cap every month, and we show up and we ask questions. We are coming here, and I know it's frustrating because it's, it's happening in 10 years. I hate this. I mean, I know some things move slower than we could ever wish for, but we're coming here early on because we want input, because we wanna hear. Maybe we don't wanna hear, don't do the thing, because we believe it's the right thing to do, but we do wanna hear how it should happen, and if you have thoughts on it, and if you want more treats. I'm not filibustering, I promise you. I'm gonna remember that comment forever. Anytime I do a presentation, I'm gonna talk really fast. But it is, it is a conversation. We're not here just to talk to you and then forget about you. When we come here and we, and we wanna hear from you, and we wanna get your thoughts, and we wanna get your engagement, and we give you our business cards with our cellphones, we mean it. Call us. There's people here in the audience that I know that will call us at any hour of the day because there's an issue, and they know that we will run to fix it because we actually wanna hear from you and we care. And it is a negotiation, like you have with your city council.
Well, I respectfully disagree, and the point is that you're a quasi-government entity. We don't have the opportunity to go vote on your board of directors or on your folks that are... So it's completely different than what these guys go through. I mean, you are right. They can be elected, they can be runoff, they can have all of that. They're facing all of that on a daily basis. So you don't have the same environment. You're a quasi-government entity. You have an awful lot of power, you have an awful lot of economic power, and, but you're in a situation to where if we don't like where you're putting a rail system, there's not really anything we can do about it. And quite frankly, the comments from Text Dot, when we're talking about a sound test or analysis that they do 13 years ago and they won't do it now, is kinda like you guys telling me that you're gonna run 5,000 trucks or 10,000 trucks, and all of a sudden you're running 30,000 trucks. The point that I'm trying to get at is, y'all are quasi-government entities. These citizens don't get to vote for you. They don't get to vote for your executive director. So please understand that it is, that's the difference. I mean, this mayor right here, he's gotta deal with all of these issues on a regular basis, and, and he understands what, what the citizens need or what they desire, and he has to try to accomplish that. And, and all I want is everybody to understand, and I don't think anybody has corrected me from up there yet, that there's not one thing that these citizens can do except have input. That doesn't mean you're going to change anything that you do. They can stand up and talk about it. That's all I'm, I'm asking, that them to understand that, and if there's a debate about that and y'all wanna have that debate, I'm willing to listen.
But you're not discouraging people from engaging with Text Dot or with the port and giving their input and giving their opinions so that something may be done about it, right?
No, I'm not discouraging them, making their comments. My point is that to have any expectations of you all doing something different is really...
What is, what is asked, though? What do you want done differently?
They want that done in 10, less than 10 years.
Oh, I love, I mean, we love that idea. We really do. And Jordan takes you up on it. We want to make sure that we get the support. We want to have things done as fast as possible. That's why we're doing it in segments, but Jordan, the smartest of us all, will figure out how this can move along and what is the support that we need, and you'll see us back here.
And you're coming back for a, a letter of support. That's basically the HGAC. I think that's what you said, right? Okay.
So I'd, I'd like, first thing I'd like to know is, is I saw in your presentation that y'all had a quiet zone, but it really didn't go into detail. I think that's kinda one of the things, like, one of our biggest arguments that we're having with Text Dot right now is about the whole noise issue. Well, I know very well that the Port of Houston Authority works very closely and very well with the city of LaPorte, and so I'd like a little bit more detail as to what y'all's ideas are of the quiet zone, what your plans are to maintain a true quiet zone, and kinda just go into more detail on that.
So the quiet zone is a specific, it's a railroad status. It's regulated, heavily regulated by the Federal Railroad Administration, and if you meet a very high standard with a lot of criteria, then, then the intersection is designated a quiet zone intersection, and what that means is the train is not obliged to blow its horn every time it goes through the intersection. So our development of the rail corridor in and out of the Bayport complex was mutually negotiated with the city, City of Seabrook about 14 years ago in the settlement agreement, and everything we do around constructing and operating the rail is defined in the settlement agreement document. So that document, in that document, the port agreed to pursue the quiet zone. There's no, when it's our goal to be a responsible neighbor, and we wanna try to keep the noise from the rail operation at an absolute minimum. It's the same agreement where we agreed to construct the berm that's in place today. So unfortunately, there's no technology in existence that will eliminate all noises from trains moving through, but this is the best available approach we can find to reduce the noise.
Is it so, and I can appreciate that was a great answer, and I can understand where you're coming from there. But right now, the rail is only gonna be servicing the packaging facility. The one thing I would ask is, and again, I know that if we could just say stuff, that we could just make crime illegal, and all of a sudden no crime, or right? So is it possible for y'all to work with the local trucking companies to guarantee, guarantee loosely, to work with them to not use jakes and air horns while they're on our flyover? Because half these guys trying to make fuel savings and break savings, just, they're gonna use their jakes, and anybody that's ever listened to a Jake is, it's insane. So if there's any way y'all could work with them, that would be an amazing thing. When I see, when I see the difference between y'all today versus the last go-round that we had, I see an evolving relationship that changed from the last time. The last time when, when the city of Seabrook sued the Port of Houston Authority, and I think it left a lot of people with bad taste in their mouth, both with the city as well as the Port of Houston Authority. Our city council today negotiated this deal, and, and just like with Mr. Frisbee and I had the conversation, I don't know that more than $4 million could have been had out of the deal. I don't know, I wasn't there. I know that the only thing that I could tell you from a citizen that was frustrating from our side was we weren't told about it before it was being voted on for more than 48 hours business-wise. So we got the documents released on Friday, the vote happened on Tuesday. I don't know how much of that was kept behind closed doors that needed to be kept behind closed doors. And so I see our relationship evolving, and I fully understand that y'all are doing your best, and I would love to see us have the exact same relationship with the Port of Houston Authority as Torrance does with Exxon. If anybody's been to Torrance, California, there's a good chance you drove by their ginormous Exxon oil-cracking plant and didn't even notice. You can't hear it, there's vegetation everywhere, a ginormous 30 or 40-foot tall wall, and, and there's no more noise at street level than there would be if the plant wasn't there. Now, I know that we can't eliminate everything, and I think that as long as we can all look at this as a good neighbor standard in the same way that Torrance does with Exxon, then I think that we could definitely develop a much stronger relationship and start really shadowing the same way y'all are working with LaPorte directly, because y'all have a great relationship with LaPorte, and, and I think that that's something that we could do here, too. It just, you guys have to kinda look at it from the perspective of what's been going on. My grandfather, literally, his house, my sister's house is at the corner of Park and Geraldine, which anybody that knows that, that's the berm. That's the berm for the old cruise terminal. And so my grandfather was one of the people that fought tooth and nail over that. Now, if you ever heard of some old man calling about dust, that was my grandfather. So I know what you guys are going through. I appreciate y'all being here, but I really wish that, I hope that everybody understands that there needs to be a strong understanding on both sides, that we wanna be good neighbors, and we really, really, really hope that y'all wanna be good neighbors, because at the end of the day, Ted is right. If y'all were gonna pull the trigger, you're gonna pull the trigger whether we like it or not, and we wanna make sure that we support y'all as best we can, but we want y'all to support us in return.
Quick question. About that flyover y'all plan on building, do y'all plan on doing some kind of sound studies? Or I know, what I envision is this big freeway that's coming closer to Seabrook that's gonna potentially have trucks stuck up there because there's a backup, and they're just sitting there idling, you know, fuming us or whatever, you know? I don't know. I'm just saying, like, yeah, like Port Road, yeah. But, so when I envision that, that flyover, people are like, let's get it done, let's do it so we can alleviate, but that just brings trucks down to us closer and then up and through, but, you know, I don't, from here, it looks like it's far away from Seabrook, but it's gonna be pretty high up, I guess, right? Or is that low, or I don't know? 60 feet up, you know, something like that?
You know, we don't know what it's gonna look like, you know? Conceptually...
I mean, you can't build a 60-foot wall, right?
Yeah, conceptually, I just, you know, I, I know what Port Road looks like because I drive it every day.
Yeah.
So, you know, something like that. What is it gonna look like exactly? I don't know. That's all gonna be part of the design process and what goes into it, all to be determined. We, we just see that as, you know, a future phase that we would need to have to be able to keep trucks fluid.
And I understand the need, I do, but I just see it as like, it's a, you know, it's traffic in the sky, like my wife said, but, I mean, I see the need, but I just see, like, anybody that lives near this, like we do, we're just, it's like, oh, well, now we're screwed, but, but then again, like, everybody's like, oh, well, we need it, so alleviate traffic, but, you know, and you guys get them in and out quicker, but I just envision something like, just like these trucks just stalled up there, you know, or coming down and making a lot of noise, like... or, or coming down and making a lot of noise, like he was talking about breaking down, you know? I don't know. So just a quick, like, uh, do y'all do studies on that? Sound studies and things like that?
You know, it would all be a part of the design process that we're just not there yet. We're focusing on the at-grade road to get something moving, uh, but we'll definitely take that into consideration. And, you know, I want to go back to your comment, you know, something, you know, it was a detail, but, you know, us engaging with the truck community and not using their Jake brakes on the flyover. Uh, we can do that. We will do that. We'll follow up with them. To think of enforcement, I, I can't guarantee it other than we are committed to being engaged. They're a critical partner of ours. Uh, so little details like that, you know, we, we don't take lightly and we'll take that back. So thank you for that.
Um, quick question. So on the, the tracks, uh, my house is like directly behind where the tracks run, right? Behind Gion. Um, are there intentions of putting greasers at the turns? Because right now, Gion uses that to load and unload and the squealing is excruciating. I mean, it is nails on a chalkboard and woken up at 1:00 AM sometimes to like squeals from the tracks. And we've tried to engage Union Pacific about this. We had active conversations and then they would just kind of fall off. But is that part of y'all's intention? Because with turns comes squeals.
So that, that was put out there as a best practice early on. I think what Jordan said earlier, you know, it's, it's really up to the rail to, uh, you know, they're, they're the ones that, that set the parameters on what's required and not. I think at this point, what we can do is we can carry that conversation forward.
So I guess that would be my ask is that since, you know, everybody's intertwined, that maybe you guys help facilitate that because UP is not here, you know, I guess. So I would appreciate, you know, and good faith for you guys to initiate those conversations because it is anticipatingly going to be worse once they start actively using that route.
Jordan's scratching notes on it right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
And I think I heard Jordan say that you can't control all noises from trains.
Well, greasers are a thing.
Are greasers a thing? Is that something that helps? Do y'all know about that?
That, yeah. When I said that no technology exists that will eliminate all noise from trains, that includes any kind of track lubrication system.
Does that exist?
Yes, but they don't eliminate all the noises.
It helps. It has to help. I'm praying that it helps.
I'm just, I'm just, she's brought it up several times and I'm like, does that even exist? Because I'm never... But then they never did anything about it.
I think, I think, you know, we, we hear the question and we can carry that back and, you know, carry it to the, the rail for a conversation.
Yeah, I'll give you my card and I'll follow up with you. We, we like to be bridges between these places where it's a little nebulous about who's what and what's who. So we'll make sure we follow up.
So speaking of the rail, um, maybe I'm not just able to see the map very well, but I don't understand where it's crossing roads. And you mentioned that it won't cross during certain hours. I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
So you're talking about the existing rail crossing on 146 Front and Ridge, correct?
My understanding was that there, there, the spur is going to add more. Did I misunderstand what you said earlier?
Uh, I'm sorry. If, if I wasn't clear, it's, um, Gail, can you highlight kind of the middle section? Further east, further east, further... To the right. There we go. The, the rail sections are going to be added in that area on our property. Uh, and that's to provide storage and switching tracks for that facility. It, it's not going to be additional rail west.
It's, it's hard to read from where I am. Is that 146 Front and Ridge?
Let me, let me do this. Let me do this. Right over here, there, if, if you, if you go on the hike and bike trail, you can see dirt work being done over there. There's kind of a clearing strip.
Okay.
That's where they're adding the additional rail tracks. It's not, if you can zoom back out.
Right across the park.
It's not anything west.
Red Bluff. Most of Red Bluff, most of the, most of the work's done. It's not...
Yeah, if you, if you see where the, where the current structure is being built, if you're familiar with that at all.
Not there.
Okay. Well, it's, it's directly adjacent to that. It's, it's not near where the spur leads out to 146. There's no additional rail trackage there.
So what, what we're, when we say, when we're describing the rail spur, there's two different parts. I believe you're asking about where does that intersect the roadway? So the rails are physically already in place. It's the, there's three rail crossings. Two are on the 146 feet or just north of Red Bluff. They've been there for about a year or two. They're not currently used. And then there's a third intersection with the roadway, which is on Old 146, also just north of, like a couple of hundred feet north of Red Bluff. So then the part that's currently under, so that, those are the three roadways that are going to be crossed. We're going to pursue the quiet zone designation for those three intersections. The rail operation at Pacwell is going to be a drop and pull operation. So the railroad is going to come in, grab one whole train and pull it all out all at once. There's not going to be switching through the intersection, which is what was being described on Port Road. So the tracks that cross the public roadways are already in place. Those are, there's no more construction that's going to go over a public roadway. The portion that's currently being finished is it's about on the ballpark, like two miles maybe away from further into our property. So unless you're driving back there or looking back there on a regular basis, you're, that's probably why you haven't noticed it.
And you've mentioned hours. What, what sort of hours are we looking at for, for the blockages that do occur? I, I appreciate that they're going to be minimized and, and tried to kept, be kept out of prime hours, but what hours were they?
Um, we, we can ask our, we have, uh, team members who are working on that. We'll, we'll follow up with you on that information.
Okay.
I know Pacwell pretty well. What's their hours that they plan to operate this facility at?
Again, we don't have that information right now, but we'll, we'll find out and get back to you.
If they're running their normal packaging yards like they're doing in LaPorte, then like at, at the old Underwood, then it shouldn't be a huge deal. Most people will be away from home while they're switching, but it's dependent.
Yeah, we could, we can find that out.
Yeah, that's pretty important. In 1979, at Port Road, there was someone killed because that train was parked across the road. Guy slammed right into it. So there was no reflectors on the black train at night, so he never saw it. Drove 70 miles an hour right into it. So, um, so my, my question is this. I heard you say that you guys are good stewards. You want to be good neighbors and all that. So when we go into this negotiation, I wasn't there. I didn't vote for it because, but it's been said that, well, if you do this for Seabrook, you got to do it for LaPorte, all the other cities around that you deal with. I disagree. Seabrook's different. It'd be like, oh, I have to give the same deal to everyone. Their ticket prices are different at games. Well, wait, no, you got to charge everybody the exact same amount. So I disagree. So that said, and plus the, the negotiation is secret. It's not public. So how would anybody, or how would LaPorte know what we do? You know, so I, I disagree there. And so that needs to change if you want to be, you know, see, if Seabrook needs something special to do on the, the agreement, then I think that's what should happen. So can we go into that other map up there that you just had? There's that red line on the map, back one, right there. So the other thing that was said a lot is the, during the whole negotiation, I kept hearing they're going to annex or eminent domain, the, a bunch of Seabrook. Is that the plan for Port Houston to eminent domain anymore below that red line? I heard that the whole negotiations that I was involved in, in executive session. And I'm allowed to say that. So I kept hearing that the port is going to eminent domain any land that is not owned, well, I mean, any land that you want to take, all the way down to Red Bluff that goes through Seabrook.
Just to make sure I understand, are you saying that, are we planning to continue to expand southward?
Correct.
No, and that's why we're putting the road where we're putting it, so we can maintain that perimeter.
Okay.
If I understand you correctly.
Right. So, so you know where the, the road makes the S-turn and then we have our, uh, uh, facility, our wastewater treatment and all that? I've been hearing the whole time during this negotiation, you guys are going to, you guys possibly could annex or eminent domain the whole time. That's all I kept hearing. So we had to make this deal now. So I, I just sat back and listened and, you know, not much I can say. And I, I agree with Ted McCollum. You guys have a plan. I think it's a lot better for a city not to get into lawsuits with you, but at the same time, if we're going to be good stewards, let's work together. So I think the new berm, when it's built, could be even higher and plant even more plants because no one wants to see that. I've lived here longer than probably most, 1966. There wasn't any of that. You know, I used to hunt back there. There, there's a lot of different things that have happened. The, the traffic thing that I heard you talk about is the traffic thing happened basically over a one to two-year period. It went from there was never an issue to an instant there's an issue. But then the solution is 10 years. That's what frustrates the people. I'm not, we're not blaming you. No one here is going, it's your fault, but you, they sent you, so you get to hear it. The point I'm making is that's their frustration. The frustration is you created the problem quickly and yet the solution is, well, 10 years down the road, we might, uh, get something to fix this. That's frustrating is all get out. So here's my solution. Talk to Governor Abbott. You guys have money. You make tons of money. You're the busiest port in the United States. Then you work with Tech Dot. You get everybody together and go, this is a huge problem. Sky Mike talks about you guys every single day now. If you listen to 7:40. Every single day, you guys are, oh, you know, that backup on, uh, 146, you know, to be in that left lane. You know, all the trucks are blocking the right lane. So my point is, I think Ted's idea is a pretty good one too. We've talked a little bit about it. But build something all the way to 225. And I would call it a, it's not an HOV because it's not high occupancy vehicle. It's not. So don't call it an HOV. Call it a truck lane only, TLO. So truck lanes only and build it, you know, and put the, uh, the, uh, barriers that they developed from Texas A&amp;M and they ride in between it, maybe two lanes, maybe three, all the way there. I actually think that could be done and could be done sooner than 10 years. And, you know, I, that, that's the only way you're going to get a solution. And then when, and if you can work with Tech Dot, I know everything takes a study and all this kind of stuff, but sometimes you put the cart before the horse, not you, but that some, some they do. Like they, they won't do a study or they will do a study, but they did the study 10 years before it was built. That's just, that's what frustrates citizens. Think about that. You guys sat here tonight and heard that. Anybody that heard that goes, oh, we did a study 13 years before the project was done? And, oh yeah, well, you don't need it. Oh my God. You know, that's, you know, and you know what they say? That's why people get pissed off at government. Well, you know? Oh, well, that's the way it is, you know, and so it's not the way. And I'm, I'm come from a, a zero-sum world. I work in the NFL. I always say this. I say this a lot. Not for long when you screw up. So you work for the NFL, you screw up, you're gone instantly. I watched a guy get fired the elevator on the way down from a game and it wasn't pretty. And the guy was pissed and he got fired right there on the spot because he screwed up one time in a game. So that's the way it works. But, you know, oh, oh, well, you know, well, 10 years down the road. That, I'm just telling you how the citizens really feel about this. Some of them don't come forward. Some of them do, and I, I appreciate everybody tonight, but some people won't talk like I do because I'm not afraid of government. Because we're, we are the people. The people speak for, and I have to represent them. So anyway, the point is I think something could be done a lot sooner than 10 years. Obviously, the city wants to work with the port, but they want to work where, where they don't have to smell stuff all the time. They don't have to see it, hear it, and those berms help with the plants. That really does. So if they're 20 feet now, maybe 25, whatever, I don't know. And plant trees that will be, you know, will sustain life for a long time and build some bushes in there and all that, reduce some noise. And then they don't have to see it as much. And I think people are going to start being a little bit happier. But when they're stuck in traffic, and obviously you, if you live around here, you've been stuck in that. So you know what it's like. No one likes that. And to hear that the, the solutions 10 years down the road is, is a little tough. So, um, that's their frustration. And, uh, so I think, I think with like the ports, yeah. I go to Wa, I've gone to Washington DC and fought for the port. You know, I say, hey, this is a great port. We need to widen the, the ship channel and all that. I get it. Because it is a, it's a like, it's a big integral part of this whole area. We're the petrocap, uh, petrochemical capital of the world, right here. So it's huge and we know we're going to have those issues. But if you know that, some of this should have been like, oh, wait, if we're going to be opening this up, we're going to be creating this much more traffic, like he was talking about. It was, uh, suggested it would be about 7,000 trucks. Now we're above that. I know your sta, your stat was different, but then why is the backup? Why, why did the backup happen? So I say it has to maybe jump higher even to Abbott or someone like that in, in the state and see what we can get done a lot quicker than 10 years. So that's my suggestion.
Well, I couldn't agree more with what you said as far as urgency. Um, we've got, you know, this is not just a, you know, one project and that's it. It's the only focus. There's about a dozen freight mobility projects in the region that we're partnering with Tech Dot and local agencies to expedite. But I want to make it clear, this is the top priority project that we have. Of all the things in our portfolio, this is number one. I know nobody wants us to, and nobody likes to hear us sit up here and, well, it could happen in 10 years, which is why we're phasing the project so we can fast track the pieces that we can get done while we work with all the agencies for all the approvals and all those things that you need to get done. The goal is to do it faster and that comes directly from our board. Our CEO says this is, this is not on that clock. This needs to be expedited. We need to figure out a way to do all those things quicker.
Thank you. Uh, I put up on there, just in sake of time, we're coming up on the two-hour mark and we'd like to open it up for general questions as well. But wanted to give an update on the Tech Dot project boat ramp. Uh, we put out previously this exhibit and we had the designer that Tech Dot is contracted with present to city council at a previous meeting of their design. So quick update on this. It is, um, 100% designed by the Tech Dot consultants. This is a Tech Dot project to make the city of Seabrook whole as far as a replacement for the boat ramps. Tech Dot can fill in the gaps, but what was reported is all the permits for the Army Corps of Engineers has been applied for. The design is ready. Uh, so we've just got to wait for the process and it may be a little frustrating on this project, but, uh, we're targeting probably early 2027. So if there's any questions on that, that's a, a brief update.
So I'm thrilled to see the boat ramp coming back. Okay. I think that's an amenity that this community needs. So that's great news. Uh, my only comment is the amount of parking that they are providing is woefully inadequate. Absolutely completely inadequate. If you go out and walk the site, which I don't know if the guys who designed it even did that, all the spots from the original boat ramp, there are 30 pull-through spots. And I know that because I went out a couple of weeks ago and counted them because they're still there. The, everything, even the signs are still there, the lights, everything from the original boat ramp still exists under the bridge. So I would throw out for everybody, why don't we go back and reuse the original parking that was provided from the boat ramp? All we have to do is provide, uh, a road to go around the new pillars that have been put in for the bridge and you're done. You'll probably end up being cheaper than putting a, a small parking lot that is not going to really cover anything, you know? I, I, I think that this is going to be a real, as it exists, as it designs right now, this is almost useless, to be honest with you.
So I thought I was an engineer as well. I had the same plan. Uh, I don't know if David, uh, they hired a consultant, so I don't know if y'all want to... It's, it's much more complex with those peers and, and turning radius and they had a, a... much more complex with those peers and, and turning radius, and they had a, a long list of things that-
Isn't, you just-
For the common person-
Put the driveway out.
It makes sense, I, I hear you. Uh, so David, I don't know, do y'all want to comment on some of the safety issues that y'all had with the bridge?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, you know, the, the existing parking lot you're, you're referring to, you know, obviously we put Brent, uh, we widened the bridge, we got piling in, in columns and those, all through the entire parking lot. So there's, the turn radiuses aren't there. If you took a, like a regular car, like a truck, or a small even trailer and a boat, yeah, no problem, you could probably make that. But if you get a, a bigger boat and you're trying to park in there, you're not going to get out, and especially if somebody comes in there and barks-
Stop right there.
No, no.
If you extend the lot out-
I can't extend a lot out.
Why not?
Because it, it won't, it won't allow me to extend a lot out. What footprint you have is all we have, and then you can't, we'd have to put, you wouldn't be able to drive in and drive through like you're thinking because I have to protect the, the columns of the bridge. So then it's going to be a, a concrete median through all the piles of the bridge and a curb, and then so you're going to have each individual spot-
Okay.
And that's all you'd have.
So give me the 30 spots that we had before that you took away when you widened the road, give them back to me. We're happy.
Well, we didn't take nothing away.
Well, yeah, you did.
It's TechDOT, it's TechDOT right away, so it's not, we didn't, it wasn't anybody's to begin with except for the state. So what we've done is this is where we're at, and this is the best that we can-
Seriously? Seriously? I mean, really? That, that's the wrong answer here. But keep going, keep going.
But it, it is what it is. I mean, we cannot put parking in the existing parking lot. You could put individual cars, but you're not going to be able to put a truck and a trailer in there because somebody's going to get in there, and then somebody's going to get in there and block them in, and then you're going to have an issue. And so there's just not enough space to get the truck and trailers like you're, you're asking. So this is the, the concept that we came in with the restaurant parking lot that was there, the existing restaurant, and that's, that's the parking that we were able to put into that configuration.
So basically, you're going to have five, 10 people being able to use it on a weekend. That's going to work really well.
If there's always a lot of planning, that's the problem.
Yeah.
It's somebody else.
Yeah. Don't even bother. You're, you're wasting your money doing this if that's the only parking you're going to provide. I'll tell you that right now. This is going to be a, again, this, this, this sounds exactly the same as the sound wall, you know? This is going to be inadequate. It's, it's not going to work, point blank. You, you need at least, at least 25. And I'll tell you what, on weekends, those things were full up when we had the old boat ramp there. That was full up, and it was actually overflow. So to think that you can come back with smaller spaces, because again, these were pull-through, these were, these are 60-foot-long, very wide spots, very easy for people to pull through, and some, that, that's not going to work.
Out while we can?
Yeah. This, this just simply isn't going to work. I'll tell you that right now. You're wa, we're, we're wasting everybody's money doing this. If this is all we can do.
And, and I kind of agree with what he said. Do you, do you have a, do you have a boat?
Yep.
Okay, good. You've probably been out there before when it was all. So one, one of the things, and Gail, thank you very much, I've been working with Gail on this probably since I saw some email from 2017 that we traded, but anyway. So there's, there's the boat ramp, thank you very much. And the next thing that really need to think about is, how many boats can you park? Think about this, I'm all by myself because she's working, and I launch my boat, and I have to tie it to something. And how many of those can, is there, is there going to be some sort of a, think about the old one. There was outriggers, and we used to park all along there, and you could probably do four or five, go put your truck away, get in your boat, go have fun. Come back, you have to do the exact reverse. And so will there be a facility to tie to?
There, there's some small areas there outside the edge of the boat ramp that we got the fendering system in, and you can tie on, there, I, I agree, there's not a whole lot of space there, it's with different configuration.
That's going to be the trouble right there.
Well, you know, I agree, but there's not a whole lot else I can do, I mean, without eliminating the boat ramp altogether. I mean, this was, we, we went 600 different directions with this boat ramp, and we, we've had many meetings with, uh, you know, Gail, and, and we just changed different designs. You know, we, we put this road that's on the old railroad berm, that was added, we weren't originally going to put that there. And so there was a lot of things that were changed along the way, and, and for, for the footprint that we have, and for the, you know, everything that we could do, that this was the best design we could come up with.
If you find a place to put three boats so that you can go park your truck, that would probably be a good, good deal.
I have a question. I'm going to, I'm going to give you all a break. My question is more for Councilman Gail. Um, there's a, there's a mayoral candidate that has made the statement online that the bond for the PD station can, um, if we pass it, then the city will still have capacity to determine where that, where that PD station is going to be located. Now, January 23rd, I was sitting front row at the council meeting, and Buddy Hammond, when y'all were discussing guidance on where to put the PD station, Buddy Hammond's motion was specifically to put the PD station at the corner of 146 in Repsdorf. So with that conflicting information that's been posted by that mayoral candidate, what, what is the truth behind that?
I think the bond language, you need my support just for a bond.
I'm well aware.
And not the location. Future councils can still decide where that, where that goes.
So when, when the motion was made on January 23rd, it wasn't accurate.
It was a motion, it was a motion for the bond.
But it's, but it specified the location in that motion. I have the recording on my phone, I can play it, I don't think I need to.
No, I think I've heard enough of your recordings.
Sure. Yeah.
But, but, uh, what, what the language was, was for, for a bond. Council, it, future councils can decide what they want to do.
What the language stated on January 23rd was for the bond for the PD location to be at 146 in Repsdorf. So just, just to confirm, I can play it. Uh, you, you said you've heard enough of my recordings, I could play it, but I don't think that's necessary.
I believe that's what-
Um, so however, so just to confirm for the voters, because now I'm, I'm curious also because I heard one thing and I've read something else. So if the voters pass this bond, despite what was said on January 23rd, the city council and the city manager can decide where that PD station is going to be located? Is that, is that accurate?
I, I think, like I said-
That's a yes or no question.
No.
That, no.
No.
So if the bond is passed, it will, the PD station will be on the corner of 146 in Repsdorf?
No, I think, I think, like I said, the bu, the, the issue that was passed by council was to approve the bond issuance.
This is a very direct question.
Okay.
If the bond is passed-
I, I'm telling you my thoughts of what was passed.
Gail Cook.
I think what-
What he's explaining is, when the voters go to the ballot, does it say the location? That, that's the only thing we're trying to clarify. The ballot does not say that. The future council has to finish a real estate transaction.
That's exactly what I asked. So when the voters vote, the voters are simply voting yes to the PD station, and then Gail Cook, you and council, and whomever else within city leadership, will make a best determination whether that PD station is going to go on 146 or back at the location that the voters already said no to previously.
Right. We're just trying to clarify, it, there's not, it doesn't say Meyer on the ballot, so that's what the clarification is.
Okay. So voters need to know that.
I said-
Why was the motion made that way then? Why was, why did we vote on that? This is what makes me mad in hell. Why did we do that that way?
Calm down, Joe.
No, don't tell me what to do. Don't tell me what to do, Tom. I'm pissed off because this is wrong.
I believe you're pissed off.
This is wrong. You know it's wrong.
I believe you're pissed off, but that's not what-
You know it's wrong!
Chief, that's enough.
You're not running this meeting.
Okay. The voters have been misled, and, and that's all I need to say. We've verified, I don't think there's any other-
So when, listen, so when this project goes, it goes to legal counsel. So legal counsel helps us proposition language for the ballot. So for us to come up, yes, we would say, okay, we'd like this language on there, it's going to be at this address on Meyer. That's not the league, the counsel that helps us with bond propositions, they have to put in, it's going to be a building, it's going to be land acquisition, they don't go into that specific detail. And there's a template for the bond proposition. There's no misleading, it's the fact that the future counsel-
It absolutely is. I'm, I'm a, I'm a citizen-
The future counsel, the future counsel does not have, they still have that control. It's a, it's a real estate transaction. We have not-
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Right, we haven't completed-
I have no other need to discuss. I just wanted everybody at large to hear that if they vote yes, then it can go where everybody had already voted no to.
Understood.
So that's clarification.
You're, you're correct, the motion did. It's when it went to legal to draw up a proposition language. It's just like with the charter amendments.
And why did we come back and vote on that? Why didn't we come back and vote on that after you went to legal?
We needed, you needed to see if you wanted land acquisition in your proposition.
See, this is how this city runs all the time. It's always, you know, you bait me over here, then throw this little-
There's no baitment.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is, Gail.
We're going to move on to Pine Gully Pier.
The rocks and the, the trees underneath 146, that's exactly what you did.
Okay. So Pine Gully Pier, I want to be respectful of everybody's time tonight, I want to make sure we can get to their questions. Pine Gully Pier, uh, on the update on this project, we were asked to put this in for tonight. Uh, we've been updating council, and back in 2022, council approved to go into a design contract, we did that, a bid project was put out in 2022, and we had higher than estimated bids, so we're looking at, uh, way it's designed right now, over $2 million. We put in on 2022 a partnership grant, and were awarded that, uh, however, the bid came in higher. And we've recently had conversations with council to look at other design alternatives. So we've gone back to our contractor right now with that direction from council, and we're pending right now to get an alternate design contract. We also put, went ahead and put in for the 2025 grants. So the pier right now is looking for hopefully some additional grant money, that's still pending, and then there'll be another conversation with city council on what ultimate design that they want on that. So there's movement on that project as well, and I'll kind of stop there and see if there's any general questions. We're coming up on 8:15, so just again, want to be respectful of everybody's time.
I want to, this is not meant to be inflammatory, eventually, if I wind up being elected, I'm going to go through some of the same troubles that you guys have had, obviously. There are certain times when y'all can and can't talk, like, I didn't know that I couldn't hand something over, you know, the last meeting, and Tom had to correct, correct me. So I said, when we were talking to the port, I said, I think one of the most frustrating parts about the deal that was made was that the two of you couldn't talk or didn't talk. And I think it's important for the people to know why it was that you two were bound, or if you were bound, or what happened. Why was it that we didn't get the information made public until the Friday before you guys had to vote? And again, it's not meant to be inflammatory, just a general question that I don't understand the process on.
Well, as with all negotiations, those are held in executive session. The port has, port has legal issues that they can't discuss in public with their negotiations. The reason it came out quickly was the port was pushing to get it before their commission on a certain date because their, their commission only meets on certain dates, and they needed to push it forward, that's why. That's, that's the whole reason why.
It's, it's just not a part of the process I've been used to, so.
Well, yeah, it, it, that negotiation took over two years. We've been negotiating with the port, trying to get that IDA amended for over two years. It's gone back and forth, and at the very end, they ran out of time. It wasn't necessarily us.
So because most of us were confused because the motion that you made for the police department did have an address, we, we established that, and then it goes to, my question is, I'm really curious how one of the mayoral candidates, not Jackie, let's be honest, knew that? How did he know that? He seemed very clear that the approval was only for the bond, in his post, I can read it if you want.